Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, had anyone responded to doing the prayer at our meetings?
No.
We have spelled it back.
Yeah, vital man. Bev, you're on again.
Guess you have to be careful what you ask for. You hate me.
Just so you know, you're on vacation.
Right. Lord, we just thank you today as Commissioners come together, Lord, with their team to work on things to better help our county and we just ask you to continue to give them the wisdom and knowledge they need to guide us in the right direction. And we know that with your help that will happen, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome to the May 28th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the kennel this morning.
Come on, guy. Slow down, slow down.
Choking.
There you go. Look around. Go ahead. Sniffing, there you go, look at him. You're all set? Our featured dog this week is about a five-year-old Bulldog Lab mix. He's got a great personality, extremely friendly. He's available for adoption when, Tim?
Right now.
Right now he's available for adoption. Tim Pilblad, our dog warden, said we've got 25 dogs at our kennel. Extremely busy weekend over the holiday, so if you get an opportunity, stop down. If you don't take him home, I'm sure you'll find another dog for your family.
David Ashen first.
Really?
Long time no see.
We didn't restart transit.
Hi, David. Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, we'll have our second public hearing on the chip, under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Corporations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the six Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you Commissioner Kalo. I do have a number of potential hires at Golden Acres Transportation Center, Commissioners' Department, and IT that I wish to talk with the Board about, and also want to discuss a little bit about the hirings for soon-to-be underway summer youth program. Those are topic, that topic's allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we talk about those potential hires.
Do you want to talk about the qualifications for the summer youth hiring in case somebody watching or listening has some youth that may need a job this summer?
Well, there's two programs, there's two qualification levels, actually. But this is TANF funds and you're going to pass on others that are further down the agenda. There's three sites that'll be doing it. I spoke with Mary Lou this morning. There's WDA, JBS, and the Boys and Girls Club. JBS and the Boys and Girls Club are very structured and able to do this. They've done it before. I wanted to talk about making sure that we didn't have overlapping areas, we were competing for the same employers. Kind of annoys the employers when they're getting calls from groups with the same program trying to place some of the youth into those work experiences. So we clarified that, but mostly this is for youth that are TANF eligible, they're receiving some kind of services from us through the Job and Family Services. We also have some additional dollars if we are eligible under the Workforce Investment Act, and we can provide some of work experience for those folks. Last year was a little easier. We had a broader paintbrush that we use for qualification. If they were eligible for lunches and so forth in the schools, we deemed them qualified to participate. This year, the requirements are a little tighter, so we have to qualify them beforehand other than using that criteria. But if they're, if they believe that they're eligible, they can contact WDA. I wish I had brought the number with me, but I didn't.
Maybe we can have Hal put it up on the screen later.
Sure.
And then the age group is what, 16 to 24 or something?
Six, 23.
23.
And those are, again, that would be some of the "we" are you dollars can go to 23. I don't really know how far the TANF dollars go with some of you. Maybe there's somebody here from Job and Family Services.
Can you come up, please? Such a good program and I, a lot of people don't know about it and they do watch and hopefully get some people employed this summer. Good morning. Just tell us your name and where you're from, so for the record.
Margie Torres. I'm from Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services. And the numbers are 16 to 24.
What is 24? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Margie sends all the stuff over. She doesn't usually have to come to the microphone.
All right.
Sorry about that, Margie.
Thank you.
The, I apologize for that. I thought it was a 23, like the other dollars. Once again, though, this isn't for everybody that wants a summer job. Three years ago, maybe four, we had all that stimulus money and it was for any youth that wanted to work. And this is different, there's qualifications for this. But if people are receiving some form of assistance and they have youth in the family, they should receive their qualified.
Great, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Authorize the issuance of not to exceed 2.4 million sanitary sewer improvements Redfern Road Project, fine anticipation notes for the purpose of paying the cost of construction, constructing and acquiring sanitary sewer system improvements, including sewer line, forest main, lift station, and other improvements, together with all necessary appetites thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, I'm sorry.
This is enough. We've got it covered now since we moved it up since last week.
You know, actually, last week, I just made it more complicated. So just ask you to change the number to 2.4.
Because it was 2.2.
I think it's going to be even a little less than that. It's probably like 2.1 and some change. I made it to 2.4, so I don't have to come back here again in case it's just a little number, a little higher than that. I believe that gives us enough ceiling room that we won't have to revisit this. I should have just said that last week and we wouldn't have had to bring it back on the agenda. It just kind of, sometimes a simple answer eludes you.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, purchase a tape library server with warranty tech support agreement with CBG Tech Solutions Cleveland in the amount not to exceed $26,968.50 and authorize director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with JBS for TANF Summer Youth Employment Program in the amount of $183,903.51 effective for state fiscal year 1415 from May 20th to October 17, 2014, and authorize director to execute amend for changes in program and content and increased value to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Lorain County Boys and Girls Club for TANF Summer Youth Employment Program in the amount of $129,827.4 effective state fiscal year 1415 from May 20th through August 30th, 2014, authorize director to execute amend for changes in program and content and increased value to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Did you say yea?
It's a yea.
Okay. Thank you. Authorize purchase service agreement with Workforce Development Agency for TANF Summer Youth Employment Program in the amount of $500,000 effective state fiscal year 1415 from May 20th through October 31st, 2014, authorize director to execute amend for changes in program and content and increased value to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under common pleas, approve grant agreement in the amount of $901,387 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services Bureau of Community Sanctions 407 Non-Residential Poverty.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize grant agreement in the amount of $182,835 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services Bureau of Community Sanctions 408 Non-Residential Misdemeanor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the engineer war contract with RNI Construction, Inc., Tiffin, in the amount of $332,348.50 for Gore Orphanage Roads, County Road 34, Bridge 0087 Replacement Project, Rochester Township. Four bids were received on May 20th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Funding for the project will be 95% Federal Highway Administration through CEAO, remaining 5% will be paid from MVGT account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
As a last note on the summer employment program, we talked about, Ms. Kowski informed me this morning that if we have a successful program, we can get more money. So I'd like to be able to reach out and bring additional dollars back, so we're going to be working those programs real hard over the summer. Last year, WDA was able to spend their whole allocation and then receive additional allocation going late into the summer and early fall. So I'll get more information and we'll get it up next week with regard to phone numbers and places people can apply, and that may help generate some additional interest in the program. I want to modify my request for the executive session to include, I want to talk about a contract negotiation update with where we're at with our 911 employees, and that's also a subject of law that the Sunshine Law, so I'm clear on that. I yield the counsel. I'm complete this one, and thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I do have one matter of pending court action that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
Commissioners' report. I don't have too much. It's been a pretty short week, but I did get a breakdown from the Solid Waste Department about our collection center. Back in 2011, I gave away a rocking chair to the 10,000th person that came through the facility, and I just want everybody to know that now, since 2010, we've sold a total, serviced a total of 42,000, 41 people, both residential and businesses. So it's really a great place, and I see we take cardboard. Is that new?
You know, actually, I worked with Mr. Bailey on this. It's not completely new, but it wasn't one of the products we were taking originally. And also, we're going to put in a pit, and that's what they call it. It's just concrete barriers on three sides, so people can come up and just throw the cardboard in there, and then later in the day, we can use our equipment to take the cardboard out because there's so much cardboard coming into the, to the drive-through and it gets in the way. So we're going to pit it outside, much like we do with the tires, and we're picking up a lot of cardboard.
Yeah.
And a lot of books and a lot of things like that. So things are really great.
Yeah, I'm actually going to be taking a load out there myself of cardboard. I had a lot of boxes that I tore down and...
You're not on the court system?
Yeah, but I have so much that it'll take weeks.
How long you been saving it?
Since I moved there, you know, moving boxes and just buy things.
If you put a few each week out there.
Yeah, I know, I was doing that, but some of them are pretty big.
I will say, you know, the, our efforts at using the courts while initially met in some communities with resistance has significantly increased the recycling that's going on, especially with the glass and cardboard and plastics. So it's encouraging and, plus the fact that you need both those pails, so you got to separate.
Right, right.
Yeah, you do, especially with the yard waste and that.
You hiding it in your bootcannons, are you?
I'm still, well, yeah, because it costs me, what is it? I cut my lawn the other day, and those stupid bags at Lowe's, and it cost me $15 worth of bags in order to cut my grass.
Well, did you ever hear of like a cheap mulching blade?
Mulch? I know. Got a mulcher on your machine?
You don't mulch?
Uh-huh, no.
The, we had a big push about 15 years ago there, educate people on mulching and doing that, especially this time of year.
Dig out the old tapes for Tom.
Well, if you're fertilizing this time of year, it's really a great time to be mulching so that, you know, the nutrients go right back into, into the lawn. But unfortunately, if you don't have a mower that's set up to be a mulcher and you put a mulching blade on the wrong mower, it's not going to give you a very nice cut. It's a mess.
And while with the rain right now, too, it's almost impossible to mulch, too, unless you're going to cut it every other day. So.
You were doing your fitness test the other day. You could have gotten ready there on the...
I got riding lawn mower. That's for my beard to go in that side.
I see, I see. I can just see it now, drunk commissioner on a lawn mower.
No, 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 no. I'm the Republican.
As I said, drunk commissioner on a lawn mower.
What does that have to do with the price of beans? End of my report. Mr. Kalo?
Thank you. Mr. Cordez, my report basically around the flooding, talked to a lot of the residents, and then I talked to Mayor Hunter. I told you, I talked to Mayor Rittenhour about sitting down and talking to a regional approach possibly. This, I saw Mayor Johnson in the paper this morning, put a 90-day moratorium on building in Avon while they look at their flooding issues. They're going to slow down one of the residential developments. Have we any phone calls yet to our district, Don, while you're here? I don't know if we can participate, bring you up, talk about that? We'll get your thing in a minute, Linda.
The, I had a call from Mayor Hunter. I haven't responded to it yet. He needs some assistance with maybe some dumpsters and the likes.
He needs other residents also, where they had, it just blew up all the trees and all the debris that came forward.
Well, recognizing that both Sheffield Village and the City of Lorain already charge a stormwater fee to their residents to be dealing with them, and it's quite a hefty fee compared to the one that we have imposed in the unincorporated areas of the community. The, I would say the one in Lorain is five or six times what we charge. I think they're $9 a month in Lorain. Do you remember what it is in Lorain, Don?
I don't think it's quite that high, but it's like 6650 a month, so you're approaching $100 over a year.
I explained that to Mr. Cordez the other day. It was about six bucks, but this is not going back to $9.
All right, that's five, that's five times what we charge.
Four, but go ahead, you're not a math guy.
We charge, we charge $19.
We charge a buck and a half a month, right? And if we're charging six in Lorain, that's four times over, Mr. Cordez.
Don't mess with the human calculator.
I like five, it sounds more.
We did actually receive some, a couple of, I'd call them flags, emails off our website, Carlisle Township, as well as North Ridgeville. We were able to follow up with them, take down their information. We've recorded it so that we know where they were as we continue to compile information on flooding. We also reached out and made sure that they contacted EMA. One of them, one gentleman owned two homes, and one sounded pretty bad at about nine foot of water in between basement and his living area upstairs. So I'm sure that was one of the ones in North Ridgeville that would have contributed towards qualifying. We also got a couple of phone calls, but for the most part, I think the word got out very well about EMA, and I only had a handful of phone calls that I needed to handle and move them to EMA. So overall, I think the response was very good.
Actually, Tom Kelly is meeting with the state today to have them come out and assess the damage.
Well, you know, we made the declaration. Now we got to, we got to have them look over what we've used to justify the declaration. Hopefully, they'll agree and be able to get some aid to those folks. I didn't realize how hard the standards were myself. The, Tom thinks we have a little extra cushion in case they disqualify a couple of the places that we've submitted. Commissioner Kalo, you specifically wanted to talk about possibly working together on some joint?
On some joint regional stormwater assessment for the county and see where we really need to go on this. I mean, even if they're still running the same, if we're doing something, they're doing something, I think it should be in concert in regards to stormwater management.
As I indicated, you know, we had a brief conversation about a week ago on this. We're working on that project up in Illyria Township.
Right.
With trying to secure the property for a, what I consider a fairly large retention basin, excuse me, detention basin.
Detention basin, right.
And that's going to hopefully solve a problem in parts of Illyria Township, Sheffield Township, and then into...
South Lorain.
South Lorain, down on the Clinton Avenue area, where they actually, the engineering firm that the city hired down, they recommended they buy up those houses and tear them down, but we may be able to alleviate some of that.
We should be able to alleviate a good bit of it.
So that may be a project where we can put a couple toes in the water and maybe work with the city, but they're going to have to want to spend a little bit of money outside the city.
Correct, to make it all work.
To make it all work.
Those are discussions that have to be had.
You know, it's, they seem, you know, most times when we try to work with them, and we have really tried to work with this administration, so I don't want to leave that hanging out there, but in the past, when we've tried to work with them, they want to, they want to stop spending at the border, and the water doesn't understand the border. And so the key to dealing with some of the flooding issues in the urbanized areas is going to be a retention and detention further out to slow the volume coming in, and that means they're going to have to spend some money. They can't go, that's a township problem, because it's not. They built the city in the way of the natural progress of the water to the lake.
Right.
So they either have to provide a routing mechanism for it to get there.
Well, I think at this point, City Council and the administration in most of the cities that are north, there's an urgency now to sit down and discuss this. If it sits for six or eight months and everybody forgets about it, in three years when we have a 500-year flood again, it's going to be, what have you guys done lately? And I think there's an urgency currently to sit down and talk about those things, so we should grasp that opportunity.
Sounds great.
Thank you. End of my report.
Did you flood in Kansas?
No, I was, we were very lucky with all the rain we got. I think we got over five inches. Somehow, some way, the sewers and the sump pump held together, but...
There you go.
The next day, I noticed my pipe had separated from the sump pump outside the house, so I had to dig that out and fix it. So there was a lot of water flowing everywhere.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to bring your report?
No, that's it. That's the end of my report.
Went out to the airport, Lorain County Airport, for the airshow out there. Kids had a great time, especially watching it at night with the fireworks. They had a little, it was like a hang lighter with a motor, shooting fireworks out and everything. Good crowd out there, airport did a wonderful job hosting that, and hopefully you can make it out there next year if you didn't go this year. $10 for adults, kids 17 and under were free.
I didn't know they charged to get in.
Just $10 for the adults to kind of recruit some.
Well, Commissioner, these folks are volunteers. They're aviation supporters, so they charge just a little bit to offset, offset their cost, and the publicity and the recognition it can bring to the, to the airport is significant. So I think that fee's very, very moderate. Minimal.
I just don't remember them charging in the past.
Yeah, but they, they had planes out there. They had rides, helicopter rides, for the kids and everything. So just a great family event, again, wonderful job by those individuals that put that on. On Sunday, went out to Huntington Township. I was told by Mary Beth Derikito that first commissioner ever to walk in their Memorial Day Parade out there.
Huntington has a parade?
They have a parade, and they actually have a great chicken dinner afterwards.
Would it take about 15 seconds to walk to Huntington?
No. You know, actually...
I like Mary Beth, I'm just having a little fun.
The parade was short, but the services that they did, they kept it focused on the veterans and the true meaning of Memorial Day, and they didn't have cars, you had to walk, and really focused on going everything from Civil War all the way up to...
Did you shrink wrap yourself?
You're quite the comedian today.
I know. If I could only get one more vote. But it was great.
You and Ted may agree again.
That would be too scary. But got to sit down and talk with a lot of Korean War veterans out there, and, you know, the guys, we went over to AmVets afterwards, and 75, 80-year-old guys, and they're sitting there telling me stories, and I'm just watching them. They're pounding the Budweisers, going back and forth. I mean, it was hot, but it was good to see that they were out, physically fit, and really participating in it. And one guy ended up breaking, he was, I think he's 78 years old, he was lifting a lawnmower off his truck, broke three ribs. He didn't walk the parade because he couldn't keep in step, but he walked on the side, and he was out there volunteering, and I'm hoping I'm in that greatest shape when I'm his age. And then on Monday, went out to Avon Lake, American Legion, another great parade, and they had another chicken dinner, so that was free to the public, but great food. Unfortunately, I'm just putting on way too much weight, so good thing I'm coaching baseball.
That's why you're trying to get a chicken farm started, uh...
Well, with all these people having...
Supply all these chicken dinners.
Yeah, we can make a fortune.
Yeah.
And so, but, um, busy weekend with baseball and, uh, soccer, um, got a nice tans, uh, after the parades. I was out on the baseball fields for about twelve hours, uh, watching all the different kids and, uh, coaching, so. Good job, uh, to all the communities with their Memorial Day, and, uh, again, special thank you to all the, uh, families, um, uh, that have members serving or lost members, um, that's serving our great country. End of my report.
All right, can we go into the public hearing now?
Yep, second public hearing on the seat chip, Linda Blanchett.
Since Phyllis Dunlap from C.T. Consultants did a fabulous job last time at the first public hearing, she's going to do the second public.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Aye.
As you all know, the first public hearing was held on March the twelfth to inform the citizens of Lorraine County about the eligibility to apply for community housing impact and preservation funds. Um, at the public hearing, the commissioners informed the public of the county's intention to partner, um, as partnering would gain each community that is partnering an additional fifty thousand dollars and additional points on the application, it strengthens our application. Um, the, uh, the, their, a partnership was formed, uh, Lorraine County is partnering with City of Oberlin and City of Sheffield Lake. Lorraine County has been elected to be the grantee on that application. Um, housery, Housing Advisory Committee was subsequently held on April the eighth to discuss the needs of those partnering communities. Um, and through, through that pre-planning process, activities were identified that would, um, address the needs of the partnering communities' citizens. The total grant request for the partnership is one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners proposes to utilize those requested funds, uh, if awarded, to carry out the following activities. In Lorraine County, the City of Oberlin, City of Sheffield Lake, which also includes Amherst. Again, the service area for the grant will be Lorraine County, Cities of Amherst, Avon, Oberlin, and Sheffield Lake. The first activity is private owner rehab, uh, we are applying for six hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars in home funds. Uh, we anticipate that those funds will address approximately eighteen housing structures, um, seven in Lorraine County, five in Oberlin, five in Sheffield Lake. Uh, an additional eighty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars in program income is being committed by the partners, which will, uh, result in approximately three additional projects, one in Lorraine County and two in Oberlin. In order to qualify, the owners must be single, uh, must be, uh, LMI eligible, and, uh, it must be a single-family owner occupied residential structure. Those, uh, that will be provided on a loan, um, made at zero percent interest, forgiven after five years, and again, the funding source is home funds. Second activity, home repair assistance, approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which will result in forty-four housing structures receiving home repair assistance. Two of those, uh, we are, uh, setting aside for septic repair or replacement assistance. Fifteen, uh, houses will be improved in Lorraine County, thirteen in Oberlin, thirteen in Sheffield Lake. Qualifying homeowners again have to be, uh, LMI eligible and, um, owner occupied, rental units are not eligible for the assistance. Uh, all improvements will be made on a grant basis, funding source is CDBG. Uh, the third activity, tenant-based rental assistance, uh, we're applying for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, which should result, result in twenty-one families being assisted with tenant-based rental assistance. Um, we are going to do, uh, that assistance will be in the form of first month's rent, security deposit, utility deposit, or any combination thereof. Uh, we anticipate that seven, uh, units or seven households in each of the communities will be assisted with this funding, it will be on a grant basis, and the funding source is home. We are applying for, uh, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in administration funds to run the grant, um, to reimburse community, the community for staff time dedicated to chip projects, and it can also be used for retaining program consultants. The funding source for that will be CDBG and home funds, uh, and we are also applying for fair housing dollars at approximate amount of four, four thousand dollars, which will be funded through CDBG. Total grant request, again, is one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All the activities proposed will meet the national objective of benefiting low and moderate income persons, and the application is due to the Ohio Development Services Agency on June the sixth. Any questions?
Yeah, we'll do it, anything from the public in regards to the public hearing? Thank you, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Uh, Madam Clerk, do we need a motion now to approve the application? Also move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, board correspondence.
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment.
Mr. Ashenhurst, long time no see.
Been quite a while. It's good to see you all, um, David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. A couple of things, uh, I am on the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health, and the, uh, annual meeting is later today, I hope, maybe I'll see some of you there. That is a ticketed event, there was a free event, um, when the Amy Levin Center was, Education Conference Center was dedicated, uh, a couple of weeks ago. We had Marcy Capter there, we had two of our three re- state representatives for the county, a representative from, uh, Senator Portman's office, it was a very good event. And, um, Charlie Neff spoke, uh, in a discussion of Amy Levin's contributions to the public mental health service in Lorraine County that was just staggeringly good. Um, and I think it's going to be on the county's website, or else on its Facebook page, which I haven't liked yet either, but I, I'm going to, and, and I need to tout that. And I'll be back here probably when Charlie Neff comes to ask to put a levy on the, uh, on the ballot in mid-June. Before that, um, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who flooded but kept Oberlin from getting any rain at all from Friday noon to, uh, Monday at six o'clock this past weekend. We didn't have a drop of rain, and we had a wonderful commencement and reunion weekend, we had lots of stuff associated with it, and, um, I, you know, parents come for their kid's commencement, and they're saying, what are they complaining about? Because the place just looks gorgeous. But it only started that way, you know, a week or so before, before that, it looked as gray as everything else does, and, and it kinda does again. I would also, I appreciate the report on the airport, uh, event, nobody in Oberlin can go to that, 'cause there's too much going on in Oberlin that same weekend. But, um, but we certainly support, uh, the airport and having it there and having, uh, having that outreach go on. One of the things I'm also still involved in is the Juneteenth program. This is the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of, of Westwood Cemetery. It was actually conceived before the Civil War, but got a whole lot of use very early in it. And, um, it was named Westwood on June eighth, eighteen sixty-four. June eighth, twenty fourteen, we're going to have a ceremony at the old graveyard in Oberlin at two o'clock. A rededication of Soldier's Rest in the Potter's Field in Westwood Cemetery between three and four. At four o'clock, Oberlin clergy are going to rededicate the cemetery. I've been doing a whole lot of work on who was moved, uh, reburials. Twenty years after the cemetery was started, there were still seventy-five to a hundred bodies still in the old graveyard, I mean, it, it took a long time to move all those bodies. And the actual date of the original dedication was July sixteenth or eighteenth, I don't know if we're going to do anything for that. But that's June eighth, Sunday, from two to about five o'clock, with lots going on in a couple of different locations, but not an enormous number. And by the time this is aired, uh, that will be ahead before the next commissioners' meeting. June fourteenth is the festival on Tappan Square with the usual parades, and, um, we're, we're getting a motorcycle show going now, we had motorcycles last year, so that's fun for everybody. Uh, there's still time to get into that parade if, uh, anybody who's on the ballot would like to walk in it, that's available to them.
What day is it?
Saturday, June fourteenth, it's, I know the Duck Tape Festival is going on, too, but you actually can do both, the day's long. But anyway, we'll, we'll look forward to seeing some of you down there for that. And, um, I do appreciate still getting the, uh, commissioners' agendas, I don't get to watch the meetings very often. But I hope when you, when you do things, if, if you ever answer a question, what would Shirley say, or what would Shirley do? I think that's a tribute to what I've still been involved in, 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 um, government accountability with public records and open meetings. Thank you.
What's all the colorful, like quilts or something I saw on the fence when I was driving through Oberlin?
I think that's for, uh, the artist as quilt maker, and another thing about, uh, textiles that are going on in the New Union Center for the Arts, uh, through Fava. That is, yeah, that was on through this weekend, and as a matter of fact, the Oberlin Chalk Walk happens the weekend after Juneteenth, and they have this, this mural down at the library with this beautiful animals in an ex libris message, you know, from the library of message, and it's wonderful. And they were gonna whitewash that wall before commencement, I said, you don't, it, it doesn't take that long to dry, wait until after, and they were saying how bad the weather was, and they had to do it when they, but they left it up, so. But that's, uh, something that's going on within the New Union Center, so that's what, a couple of things going on.
Oberlin was definitely busy, I went through on Friday, we're heading out to a soccer game Saturday, I was out, uh, driving through there on Sunday, too, so it was amazing to see all those people out there. Hard to get a reservation.
I was gonna say, the only seat you can get in town is down at the McDonald's, and even those are in short supply. But the downtown just gets, it was wonderful and very sunny, and, um, and not as, I mean, we've had hotter, so that was a relief, I think, to some people, but, uh... And Tom Perez was wonderful, and the Chronicle gave it front-page coverage for his remarks, and it's just a very good several days, and...
You know, I, I did make it out, they had a folk, uh, festival not too long ago, a concert, how did that turn out?
Uh, they have a number of different folk things through the course, and as a matter of fact, there's a Juneteenth Blues Festival, I think it's, it, uh, it's in Lakeview Park, um, is Sunday, the fifteenth, after the Juneteenth Festival in Oberlin. But there's, there are a number of different folk events throughout the, the year, the summer in Oberlin, it's, some of that's just starting, but the college is finally winding down, and, um, you know, they...
Got a lot of good concerts out there.
Absolutely, always, thank you.
Thanks, David. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? If not, I'll make a motion, motion to go into executive session as outlined by the county administrator and the county prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Liria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.